Hampton High School, Valedictorian Elizabeth Towel.
This one. So, do you first off, do you know what form this is in? I love tutoring and I only tutor math. I could tutor other things, but I've tended to focus on math because especially in Hampton, we have huge problems with math SOE passing rates. And it really upsets me because math has always come so easily to me. Like, you know, when I was young, my mom would count things with me and I was always very involved with math. My grandfather, who I lived with, was an engineer, so we were always doing math when I was young. And I think that the reason so many people have problems with it is because they're not given that help at an early age. I've helped a girl after school who wanted my help and I've gone to Saturday school. And what I do with them is I try to get them to focus on how math is common sense. And I was really excited because my grandmother that raised me had actually been valedictorian as well. So I grew up in her house and it was kind of awesome that I was following in her footsteps. And also, it's just a good feeling, you know, to feel like you actually succeeded. So it kind of motivated me to push even harder at that point. For my whole life, she was a big influence on me. She actually went to college and got a degree, which at her time, you know, a lot of women didn't do that. And she was always really particular about my grammar, about how I spoke, what I did. She was really big influence on succeeding. I think that to a certain degree succeeding academically is partially being intelligent, just natively intelligent. But I think another big part of it is how you're raised. If you're raised to speak correctly, if you're raised to count, you're raised to read early. The way that you're brought up is going to really determine if you're going to be successful or not. And then, of course, there's the work ethic aspect. If you have a good work ethic, you're going to succeed. If you don't, you're not. I know so many brilliant people that go here that barely get through high school just because they're not motivated, they weren't raised to care about it, they have other home concerns. So it's really a combination of nature and nurture. I don't think you're born to be it and I think you can be raised to be it. My personal life has always been really important to me. So when I've chosen things that are extracurriculars or things to do outside of school, I've made sure that they're things that are enriching. I've made it to my senior year of high school. So Kiez is the version of the key club that's just women. And it actually originated because traditionally, key club didn't allow women. It does allow women now, but Kiez was formed kind of in reaction to that, say, okay, well, we can have our club too. And it's a community service club. So we focus on women's issues, our community issues, and it's also just sisterhood that I love. All the girls are so kind to each other and it's just a great experience for everybody involved. I wound up applying to ODU, William &amp; Mary, and UVA. And I've been accepted to all of those places. I was accepted as a presidential scholar at ODU, which is awesome because my grandfather was the president. And I was accepted as an echo scholar at UVA and as a Monroe scholar at William &amp; Mary. And I chose to go to William &amp; Mary because it really, for me, was a cultural thing. I really wanted to be challenged intellectually. So for me, the top schools for that really, it's an Ivy or it's a UVA or it's a William &amp; Mary. So that was kind of the first round of selection. And then on top of that, I wanted to go somewhere where people were intellectual without being arrogant about it and kind of people who were just interested in things and wanted to talk about them. And I really wanted to go somewhere like diverse with a diversity of ideas, diversity of ways of thinking, just, you know, cultural diversity as well. And for me, William &amp; Mary was great on those counts. And it's close to home, you know, it's kind of safe in that regard. But I also worked there over the summer last year and that kind of impacted my decision as well. Well, high school was really great for me in a lot of ways. I mean, of course, it was emotionally exhausting in ways, but I think it is for everyone. But I really grew as a person. And it's just so diverse here and there are so many different people from so many different places. I mean, we're in ESL school, so we have people from all these different countries. We have IB, which draws kids from all throughout the city. And then it's just a really diverse place. And so for me, that was so enriching because I got to meet people that I really clicked with. I got to see all these different perspectives from different people. And I really feel like I'm a lot more worldly than I was before I came here, which I think is so valuable. And then on top of that, the education that I got in IB was just of such high quality. I mean, it was challenging, but I think that that challenge really made me a stronger person academically and just in other ways. There's a lot of learning both about the world and about facts, which is an awesome combination, I think.
Saludatorium, Thomas Kleckner.
I like swimming because it's a discipline-based sport. You get into it what you put out. So, you know, when I swam more, I swim better. You know, you get tired. The thing about swimming is it doesn't actually hurt. A lot of sports, like I enjoy running, but running can really hurt. Swimming, you know, you'll get a burn or whatever, but when you get out, you just kind of feel drained. It's a different feeling. You don't get it in anything else I've ever done. I take a lot of cues off of my dad and the way he does things. His problem-solving approach, practical skills, you know, he's taught me how to do car work and wiring and a bunch of other stuff like that. And they're all very useful skills. I don't struggle with schoolwork, but I'm disciplined. I do my work when it's supposed to be done. You know, I put in the work when I need to, but I don't always need to. It just takes a little bit of discipline, honestly. You know, you pay attention, you stay on top of what you're assigned and it just kind of falls into place. I applied to Virginia Tech and that's it. Got accepted to Virginia Tech, got accepted into honors, got accepted into engineering and was done. I've stayed there before for swimming. I liked the campus. It's a school that I can afford. It's a school that will take all my transfer credits, which is about 25 credit hours. I like their engineering program. They have a good undergraduate degrees for pretty much anything engineering you want to do. And so it was easy. It was no stress. So why not, right?
Bethel High School, Valedictorian Stephen Deschong.
Hey, butt kicks, ready, go. Butt kicks, go. Butt kicks, ready, go. Butt kicks, ready, go. I've been playing baseball since I was in T-ball, which was maybe six years old and with my mom running Little League. And both my brothers playing baseball, it just became a family thing. And it's been a great thing for me because it's the way I relieve stress, that and cross-country. My older brother's really good in it. After my older brother walked out of high school, I found out that he was really high in his class too and I just wanted to be like him because he's my role model. And I even strived myself to beat him the best I could in anything. And after hearing that, I immediately called and I said, hey, Will, I found out I'm valedictorian. And he said, great job and I'm proud of you. And that just meant a lot to me. So of the two people that have been a great influence on me, Will is one of them. He's my older brother and he's at Tech right now. And it's one of those sibling rivalry things in sports, academics. And it's funny though, because in cross-country too, I beat him in the 5K, which was also amazing. And yeah, the other influence is my mom because she's one that makes me, well, I guess you can say get on me for academics, making sure I get all the homework done, all the homework done correctly and just the best I can. Like, a lot of people ask me, hey, do you study? And I say, not that often because the way I see it, if you do your homework, all of it, and you do it correctly, by the time a test or a quiz comes around, you should be able to do it. Just like in baseball, when you practice, if you do the same thing over and over correctly, you don't need to go after, well, I mean, you could stay after practice, but if you get the fundamentals down, by the time a game comes, you should be able to have those ready. If everyone does their best and then they're humble, united, and selfless, then there won't be any problems on the team. Everyone's doing their job. During the Fellowship of Christian Athletes, we have guest volunteers or speakers that give the devotion. And the cool thing about that is that it's sort of like Sunday School. The thing with Fellowship of Christian Athletes is that you're getting the Word of God and it's being related to sports. For example, the devotion I gave on Friday, it was on bad attitude and how it influences and negatively impacts how people play in games or in football, baseball. And it's really great being able to get that spiritual word every Friday. I only applied to Virginia Tech because their early acceptance or early admissions is confining. And the way that is that if they accept you and you confirm with them, you have to pay a $400 fee to show that you're with them. And my mom told me that applying to any other schools would not be worth it once I hear from Tech and if they say yes, then there would be no point in applying to other colleges. You have to be willing to sacrifice it every now and then. Even though we live in a generation to where everyone is best friends with each other or they go out every weekend, being academically, incredibly academically involved, you have to be able to sacrifice it. And about the studying, if it doesn't come to you firsthand, then you have to be willing to go back to it again and again. Because the way it is with academics, psychologically speaking, is if you can get it from a different aspect, perspectives, such as reading, reading it, writing it, closing the book, and then writing it again, it's basically implanted in your brain. So that's the way it's worked for me. Shuffles, go. Shuffles, go.
Saludatorium, Erin Edler.
I'm really passionate about making things because as long as my hands are busy and I'm just doing something that requires like an intricate thought process, then that helps me relax for some reason. Because I don't know, like my mind's just focused on one thing. It's not just running around on any different thoughts. And it's just the central process and that helps me unwind. I feel kind of honored because I didn't really think I was all that smart, to be honest. But I guess, I don't know, it just came to me. I love my sister because when she went to ODU to like major in kinesiology to become like a physical trainer. And one of her science classes, it was really hard for her. And instead of just like getting out of the class and just skipping altogether, she keeps trying to take it over and over again until she gets the grade that she needs to succeed. And that's showing me that like you don't give up just because something's hard. You have to keep working for it until you get what you need to get. Oh, my parents told me that school has to come first regardless of everything else. So basically what I do, I have to like set aside like a certain time in my day that I've just focused on homework and get all that stuff done. And once I feel secure in like all the work I've done, then I can go out and spend time volunteering and just going to the movies and stuff like that. And just to relax, I just do crafts and things just to unwind. You know why this one's so complex?
Yeah.
Why?
Because it's so close together?
That too. Plus there's like, you know how like normally there's only two lanes? It still shocks me in some ways because I guess I don't see myself as a role model, but if someone's looking up to me and seeing that like you can still do your homework and have a social life and not just have to be caught up in doing things that you know aren't right, then that makes me feel good because then I'm doing something that I never thought I would probably do. I notice that like the kids are actually happy to see me because like they have someone to talk to and just, you know, not to worry about getting in trouble all the time. So for me, it was like at the same time helping them, but it's helping me too because then I had time to play and have fun. All the schools I applied to, I got into. So let's see. There's James Madison University, George Mason, Old Dominion University, Virginia Commonwealth University, William &amp; Mary, and then University of Virginia. And I just found, University of Virginia was like the last school I found out I got into. And I drove through it one day on my way to tour another college and just seeing it, like I guess like the sun was just coming up and it was just beautiful. And like the stadium was humongous and it just seemed like a place where I would fit in at. So I'm leaning towards University of Virginia right now. You have to realize that you're going to be stressed out sometimes and you just kind of have to not accept it, but find a way to balance it out and find something else that can bring you like relaxing once you finish all the work that you have to do. Like just find something you enjoy, take pride in it, set aside time to do that if things get too much and just, you know, enjoy it all you can.
Kickitaine High School, Valedictorian Sarah Angel.
I started out doing gymnastics. I have a gymnastics background. Did that for about 10 years. Because of an injury and other factors, I stopped gymnastics and kind of segued into dance. And that was, it's just, for me, it's like a stress reliever. For some people, it's running, others it's, you know, baseball or whatever other sport. It's my way of expressing my emotions. So I may get really stressed from school, but I can just dance and let it all out. And it's also a way for me to kind of maintain my strength and flexibility that I had from gymnastics. Lauren and I, we both had an idea that we were going to be tied. So once we found out that it was official, my, I guess my initial reaction was just, wow, this is unreal. You know, I had been working for this for four years and we kind of had this goal of being together and being tied, but that it was actually reality was definitely surreal and it didn't even feel, it took a little while to sink in. Even though we're best friends, she knows me better than anyone. She's kind of been that friendly competition that has kept me going through college applications and just regular schoolwork. So, and then other than that, my parents have always been the biggest support system. And I'm extremely grateful for that. And then also my dance teacher, just because she's such a great role model and she teaches me how to balance work and school. I'm not one of those type of people who's going to take it one day at a time, like some people say. I definitely have to plan and be ready for what's coming up so that I can block out time to do homework so that once I'm done with my homework, I can go and enjoy. It is so easy for me personally, because this is just who I am, to get caught up in, oh my gosh, I have a huge test tomorrow. But I have to sit back and realize that that test or that project is not going to define, you know, who I am or my, it may not even have a big effect on my grade. So a lot of times, it's hard to see that in the moment. But going through these four years, I've definitely realized that just being able to plan and seeing the big picture and looking at my future and what my goals are is what's going to help me the most. I was only accepted to UVA out of seven schools. But I don't see that as a bad thing because I kind of hoped and prayed for clarity as far as like the college decisions go. So while it was very rough at first to not be accepted to, because UVA was not my number one school at first. So being only accepted there kind of put it into perspective that that was where I was meant to be and I realized that a lot quicker. So it made it easier because I didn't have to make a decision out of, you know, seven schools, just something like that. So it has definitely been a wake-up call, but I'm very happy with my decision to be able to go to UVA. Intelligence is natural. Being smart is not. But being in high school taught me that even if I had this natural intelligence and didn't do anything with it, then it wouldn't matter because people would not think I was smart. So I think that for me, being smart is working hard. Because without it, I would not be the valedictorian. I would not have all these, you know, special accolades and such. So I think to some extent, it's natural, but what you do with it is what matters most.
Valedictorian Lauren Chambers.
Band has been something I've been involved with since sixth grade. So it's kind of a habit by now, but I've always been musical. I played piano when I was in third grade and I stopped a few years ago. But I really just love music and someone once told me that band people are either wonderful or crazy. And I've definitely found, my experiences with honor band, I found really awesome people and really concerning people, but it's definitely exciting. Halfway through junior year, we went to the Academic Awards Banquet and they announced that we were tied and we were so excited and it was a great moment. So all through senior year, we were tracking our GPAs. We had like Excel files and things. And we were trying to figure out if we'd be tied. So the day that grades went in, I went down to Ms. Thompson's office and she said, you guys did it, you're tied. And then I like walked around the hallway skipping and I called her and screamed and it was a good moment. My parents definitely have supported me all the way, as they will gladly tell you. My dad is a massage therapist. My mom is a NASA scientist. So they have a wide range of experiences. My dad definitely helps me in social situations. My mom can help me with my homework that she shouldn't remember from college, but she still somehow manages to. And I've definitely had some of the best teachers, I think, in the state and the country. I taught myself to read when I was four. And then in school, first and second grade, I would come home and they'd ask me, what did you learn in school today? And I would say, nothing. I was bored. So I eventually went to Mary Peak, the gifted center, and then Jones, the magnet middle school. And there I was really, I had a lot of fun. I really loved the gifted program. So I guess really early on, I realized that learning is something that I am good at. It's definitely a struggle. Definitely this year, the past few weeks in particular, I've had a plethora of work for all these different classes. But what usually suffers is my sleep. So I make sure that throughout the week, I get the homework done that I need to do. And then the weekends, let myself relax and I can meet with my friends. And then throughout the week, I still have band practice and dance, which are must-dos. So I block out time for those. So it kind of comes together eventually, but sleep doesn't happen much. I got into UVA, Oberlin, Princeton, Harvard, Yale, Columbia, and Duke. And then I went a couple of weeks ago and I toured Princeton and Yale because they were my top two. And after I toured Princeton, I was really having a hard time because I loved Princeton and I knew I was going to love Yale. But then after I was at Yale for a couple of days, I could just tell that the community was where I wanted to be and the architecture was so gorgeous and all the people were so nice. It was just perfect. I would love to make some sort of discovery that would go down in the history books and people would know my name for, oh yeah, she's the woman who discovered so-and-so particle that we never even knew existed. That would be really cool.
Saludatorium, Allison Barnes.
Allison Barnes. I should say captains. Thanks, Jennifer.
Soccer has been such a big part of my life for so long that I remember my, just growing up with soccer, it's taught me how to interact with other people. I've coached soccer, refereed. I've been a board member for AYSO. It's just, I love the, because I referee like six-year-olds and it's nice, whether they score for their own team or whoever, there's the excitement in their eyes. It's like they, they found one of their purposes, which is, it's so sweet. No matter what, I know my teammates are my family and if I need somebody, they're always there. I stay with my coaches. I remember there's some times where I'll be stressed out and I'll just call my coach, Jen Mangus, and just she helps. One day at practice and I'm fine the next day. I was actually surprised because Sarah and Lauren tied and initially thought that I would be third. But when they tied, it was definitely, I think I walked out and I called my mom and she didn't, she didn't know. So I, she works over at Moten, Early Childhood Center. So I went over there and she cried when I told her. So it's just, it was such a relief to know that everything for the past four years has paid off. It's definitely my mom, she pushes me. Like she was Teacher of the Year this year. And she always tries, like pushes me to do my best. I have two younger sisters, so they always tell me to be like a role model for them. And then my dad with the whole soccer thing, he's been my coach for years. So he's always, because I was a coach's daughter, he's pushed me to not play favoritism, so he would actually push me harder than everybody else. And that mentality has been with me through school, soccer, everything I've done. And it kind of gets easier as you go along, but I know, there's definitely late nights, but you have to see, like, do you want to finish your homework on Friday and then go out with your friends on Saturday night or wait till Sunday or anything like that? It's, you just have to think about it and realize where you, what's most important to you. But I definitely think that your social life in high school is just as important because that's when you find out who you are and who you want to be and you learn a little bit about yourself. So you want to definitely make time for your friends. I was accepted to UVA and Tech. I chose UVA. My dad is a huge fan of UVA. And I wanted, they have a better pre-med program. They actually have the pre-med major. And I was, I'd actually not visited Tech until a few weeks ago. And Virginia Tech, I mean, UVA with my dad pushing it so much, he's, we visited quite a few times. And I actually wasn't completely sold until Days on the Lawn and they played the Fight Song, the good old songs, they call it. And I just got that feeling and it's just, I couldn't imagine myself anywhere else. But I, I'm looking more recently into like autism research in pediatrics and still neurology strands, but I really want to do with pediatrics. Maybe not surgery, but definitely some kind of research with autism.
On three, girls, let's go Warriors. Ready? One, two, three, Warriors!
Phoebus High School, Valedictorian Jack Peters.
I do enjoy playing music and learning songs that other people play and just kind of improvising with it, making it sound kind of, kind of more my kind of vibe. My brother was valedictorian, so I know I have to, there's a lot of expected from being top of the class. He would normally be the one that would push me to do, when he did go to school with me in Phoebus, whether it was wrestling or soccer, he'd be the one pushing me to run faster or wrestle harder or just stay up later and do my homework, make sure I got it done. I'd probably say without my brother, I wouldn't be here. Because he just has that, same thing with my dad, he's got like a strong work ethic. In my ninth grade and a lot of my middle school years, I didn't, I know I didn't try so hard, but I can definitely say depending on the people that influence you, it can definitely put you up there.
Win on three. Ready? One, two, three, win!
I started playing, I guess, seriously in ninth grade. And I played goalkeeper ninth through 11th. And then this year, I got switched onto the field. I enjoy to work together with a team. It looks good. I like, I like doing teamwork when you get the ball moving around really nicely. It's, it's another kind of sport. It's really nice. I got accepted to UVA, William &amp; Mary, and ODU and Virginia Tech. I'm leaning more towards Virginia Tech because of engineering. They have a really good engineering program there. When you start picking up more responsibilities, people look to see more from you and they, they keep giving you more things they want you to work with. They expect more from you. And I guess I started, I started taking more responsibilities. I definitely a different person than I am, than I was in ninth grade.
Saludatorium, Elaine Hawthorne.
Attention! Attention! Now that we have your attention, let's go! At first, it wasn't something that I was passionate about. I got into it in 10th grade just for an activity. And then as time went on, it was a bond that I shared with my members. And by 11th grade, I was named a co-captain for And by 11th grade, I was named a co-captain for my work ethic. I was at practice every day, and I knew the steps, I was able to teach the steps. And then my senior year now, I'm captain. And we're able to, we've had a lot of events this year and competitions we've won and things like that, and it's a big accomplishment for me. I was proud of myself because I know my parents have pushed me to do excellence, and they want you to strive for better than what you already are and to be recognized by that. I was, I was very proud. My parents, especially my mom, and the fact that you always want to do better than what your parents were, and she's always driven me to go for what you want and strive for excellence, to be better than what you are. And so mostly without my mom, I probably wouldn't be here because she's, she's pushed me a lot through the years. I've been accepted to University of Virginia, College of William &amp; Mary, Howard University, Virginia Union, Virginia Wesleyan, University of Maryland Eastern Shore. So I chose UVA because they have a great medical program. I've always wanted to go to UVA. And this year, I've realized my passion to go into dermatology, and I figured out that they have a really section, a school of dermatology that I can go into, and I felt like that was the school for me. It gets hard sometimes. Sometimes you just feel like the whole world expects so much of you, or the whole world is on your shoulders, or sometimes you just feel like, oh, I don't, I don't want to get up today. But it's just that drive that you have within you that it's like, and it's not even for recognition, it's just the satisfaction within yourself that I've done well and that it doesn't stop here at Phoebus. It's going to go further in life, whether it's military, whether it's, it's a doctor or engineer, it goes further than that. So it's just that you have to work hard, you have to be driven within yourself.